To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Bertschel is not able to be with us this evening. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, but I would like to move one item up, the consideration of the request of the sidewalk. We'll move that up to just following the request for the chickens on the property. So with that, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda as changed.
So moved.
Okay, the agenda was posted and sent to the news media at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to read the mayor's leadership statement. The City of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. Next item on the agenda is the council workshop report from Monday, November 10th, 2025. It is available online, and I will not be reading that this evening. And we'll move on now to public comment. I just want to say we would limit all public comments to three to five minutes, and I also want to read the following. In conformance with Iowa open meetings laws, no action or discussion can occur on items presented during public comment. The public should not make any assumptions or assertions based on the lack of response to public comment from the council or staff. And with that, there are no registered in advance public comment. Is there any public comment from the audience? Okay, seeing none? We'll move on. Next item on the agenda, public hearings. There are no public hearings scheduled. There is no old business that leads us to new business. And the first item on under new business is consideration of awarding the November 2025 Image of Pride Award to Rory and Terry Fender for the property located at 1121 Fourth Street Northeast. And I'll turn that over to Councilman Holmstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce November's Image of Pride Award winners, Rory and Terry Fender, who live at 1121 Fourth Street Northeast. This beautiful home has welcomed travelers coming to Hampton from the north on Highway 65 since 1910. I don't have to tell anyone who's returning from this direction after a long drive home what a welcome sight this lovely house is to see. Since purchasing the home in 1985, the Fenders have made many improvements. They built a new garage, a front porch, new windows, roof, central air conditioning, and siding. They also have expanded the kitchen and completed much remodeling on the inside. I can honestly say that as many times as I have traveled past this house in the last 26 years of my living in Hampton, I have always found this home to be an immaculate in appearance. The Fenders say that the most important thing about their home is all of the memories that they have created with their family and friends in the 40 years they have spent in their home. They also state what a great neighborhood they, and they feel fortunate to live in. Terry had stated that Rory deserves all the credit for the upkeep on the property, but I have no doubt that Terry deserves equal praise. That being said, I do know that Rory has been awarded a very special place in his driveway as his grandchildren have given him his very own parking spot with a parking sign designated for the world's greatest grandpa. So with that, again, congratulations Rory and Terry Fender, Hampton's November Image of Pride winner. Congratulations.
Would you like to come forward? We're gonna get your picture.
I'll second that.
Oh, excuse me. Well, you can work your way forward, but I'm looking for a motion and a second to present the award to the Fenders.
Second.
Okay, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Come on down, or up. Do you have the award?
It should be in the blue folder there.
Oh, okay. Here we go. I'll sign it afterwards. Should we take it with the flag behind us?
Sure.
I'm smiling.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
I hope I got the right picture.
Yes, it just, we don't have anything else where to do.
There you go. Thank you. Congratulations again. All right. That's always fun. Thanks, Bill. Okay, the next item then on the agenda is the consideration request for chickens on the property owned by Marcela Rodriguez Matea and Mary Villanova at 1013 Fourth Street Southeast. And before we get into that discussion, I'm going to summarize Mary's letter that was in the meeting's packet. Now, Mary was sad and extremely surprised that her two neighbors received permission that she did not. Mary pointed out that she has less chickens per acre than her neighbors, and Mary did not know that it was expected, nor was she told that she had to be at the meeting when the vote was taken. And she was at a child's sport event and would have gotten a sitter if known. And Mary requests the council consider or reconsider, and then thanks the council for doing so. And before we consider the letter, given the wording of Chapter 55, that is under 55.05 livestock, it is unlawful for a person to keep livestock within the city except with written consent of the council and accept compliance with the city zoning regulations. Just using that term except by written consent, what I was going to recommend to the council that when a motion is made, that we make the motion to give consent, and then when we vote, it must receive at least four votes, which is a majority of our council votes. Three to three would mean that the motion would fail. But because it's requesting consent, I'd rather vote in favor, have a motion in favor of consent rather than to deny. Just, I'm using just some word semantics there. And just also, if we do, like with that motion, I would suggest to be consistent with the other motions that were made, that we do put a time limit on it, probably a year if that, in that motion. And then we will, I'll be taking a roll call vote, as the mayor did the last time. Okay? So at this point, Mary, would you like to come forward and make a statement, and then we'll proceed from there?
Hi, my name is Marcela Rodriguez. My kids are here. We were deeply sad to find out we were denied, and especially that we have eight acres and the other two neighbors that we love has less acres, more chickens for the acres, and was approved. My children were sad and said, well, mommy, why we can't have our chickens and they can have them, and we see them and we can't have ours. And I said, you know what? Let's go back. Let's go back and see if the chamber will decide and let us keep our chickens, because we feel upset and kind of targeted because we have a lot of acres and we were denied. And it's like, doesn't make sense that they have two acres and we have eight acres and we can't have our chickens. When we hit points last meetings, the acreage, it defines us from the residents inside in Hampton, it defines that we have acreages. So we hit a lot of that points, and to be denied and have more acres than the other two neighbors, it was sad for us. And it was like, well, why not? Why can't we have them if we have more acres, more buildings than they do? So that's why we're here considering if you guys will let us have our chickens.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion or questions. Yes, Pat?
Earlier this year, we rezoned this property because of one reason or another. What was it, and what did we rezone it to?
I think it was a industrial type, whether it was light industrial or RIC, and I think it was rezoned to AT, arterial transition.
Any other questions? Barry?
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor for chickens in the city limits, but we're, we are not setting a good example by leaving them out. So I, I'm gonna vote in favor of it, and then we can work the other issues out later.
Any other comments from council?
Thank you, Barry.
Mary?
No, that's all I'd say.
Go ahead, Bill.
I had some questions, Mary. I'm probably the one that stood out the most because I voted for the two and not the third. First, I want to say I appreciate the fact that you came back and brought your family. That was very courageous to come forth to get some reasons for our vote. The number of acres that you had, even though it's twice, sometimes three times as many acres that you have, that really didn't come into play with, with my vote. For one reason is the chickens that you have will have to be non-free ranged, so they have to be in a coop of some sort with a fence.
They are in a coop right now.
Okay. There were several things that differentiated your request from the others, and the new request that you sent to us for this meeting tonight really is, hasn't changed much from the very first request that you made. Some of the, some of the other two applicants, the one applicant said that they have no, in fact, both of them have no intention of increasing their flock.
I'm not, as I said, I think I did put it in my first one, that I was not gonna do over the 20. That was just what I'm gonna have. And I did put it in, stated in there that we were just gonna stay with that number.
Okay. Another thing that troubled me about your application and their application was the fact that they gave a description of the type of coops and welfare and the insulation and whatnot of the coops, but in your description basically said, I have a shed and we put a fence around the shed.
Yes.
So that doesn't tell me anything about the care of the chickens or the welfare of the chickens?
I think I did put it in there. I did say, we do take care of it. We do their feedings, their waters, we do clean it, and I guess you guys asked what we do with their coop, and we said we disburdened in our acreage where they had cornfield.
Okay. And I guess the third is the number of chickens that you have, 20 chickens. Now, when we reviewed all of the, many of us have reviewed some of the other cities and what they've done in their communities, and in most of the cases, the plan for the chickens for these coops was to sort of as a, I don't know what the terminology is, a chicken hobby coop. And for the most part, most of them stated between six to eight chickens is what was And yet you're coming up with 20, and I know you're basing it on the acreage, which, when their free range should not come into play anyway, if you have 10 acres or, how many acres you had? You had eight acres. So in my mind, it didn't come into play whatsoever, the amount of acres that you had. So for those reasons, and for the major reason, Mary, is the number of chickens that you have, that I would be voting no again. I think we're not, I don't think we want to allow a chicken farm on residential property in the City of Hampton.
No, definitely.
And once you exceed that, in my mind, once you exceed that eight number, or when it gets up to the 20, it's not, it's not a hobby farm for you for the chickens. It's, it's, you have, you have the flock of chickens that you're raising at your house, and you're basically in the city limits. And according to our code, it's an exception that we're making, and we're kind of making the exception for the hobbyist in my mind, for the eight, for the six to eight chickens. And when you went to 20, you all, you all of a sudden, in my mind, you went from a, from a hobbyist to a flock. And I can't, I can't.
So did the other neighbors, did you guys reduce their chickens too? Because some of them have, one of them has 10. And if we're talking about reducing to six or less, did you guys limited them to?
From, from my understanding, the, one of the applicants had, the husband said, or Jennifer Grooke said eight, the husband said nine, and Jennifer said, well, the other one's gonna die in a month or something, so they'll be back down to eight. And she stated in her plan that they will not be increasing that flock beyond that. And when her chickens are gone, they're gonna be gone, and they're gonna be out of the chicken business, according to Jennifer. The second applicant said she had six, and she was gonna stick with six. She had no intention of, she couldn't foresee going any more than six chickens. So the, the number of chickens was the biggest obstacle for me. And the coop thing is still questionable because you didn't really describe to us how you're taking care of these chickens in your, in your letter, in your letter. So that's my reasoning, Mary.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Pat?
One of the reasons we gave the other two people a year to solve this is because we needed the time to solve it as well. So if you have 20 chickens now, and we give you a year to solve this problem, or whenever we get the new code written, then that's gonna be law. So if we write the code 10 chickens, then we expect.
Definitely.
10 chickens.
Definitely.
So we gave them the leeway. They could have 50 chickens today, but after we pass this, this new law, then it's gonna be what it says.
Oh, definitely. I understand.
And as long as you understand that, I'm on board with it.
No, definitely. I understand, and the rules is the rules. And if you decide to have, like, let us keep 10, definitely we'll have 10.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other council comments?
I just hope we don't turn in the chicken, please.
I was just going to say, I'm in agreement with Barry's statements. It didn't seem right to vote yes for the other two and then tell them no. Just didn't seem like it was very fair. And also in agreement with the chicken police.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion.
I would just move to approve the exemption with a stipulation of the one year, so both we can work things out and you can work things out.
Perfect.
Just like, just like the other ordinance, or the other resolution we had last time.
So it's moved to?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. Ron, could you repeat as you wrote it down?
Motion by Palmer, second by Greifey, to approve the request for chickens on property owned by Marcela Rodriguez, 1013 Fourth Street Southeast, with a time limit of one year only.
Okay, any questions on that? Otherwise, I'll go ahead and put it to a vote. I'm just gonna go around the room. Palmer?
Aye.
Greifey?
Aye.
Rhodey?
Aye.
Lamos?
Aye.
Holmstrom?
I'm gonna have to say no, Mary, because of the number of chickens.
I understand.
And I vote yes. So by a vote of five to one, it does pass.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Well, I'm gonna remove myself, kids to bed, school tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good day at school tomorrow, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye.
Bye. Come again.
Thanks again for coming. Come back and visit. Okay, we're going to now just move to consider the sidewalk request for the removal at 826 Second Street Northwest. And Ron, let's see, did you have something?
Yeah, well, in your packet, you have the aerial photo. We talked about this at the workshop, this at the corner of Second Street Northwest and Ninth Place Northwest. I think Mr. Riggins is here. You've, I don't know if you have any further questions for him, or if you want to just discuss.
Is there any discussion then on part of council?
I just have a few things to say. You know, when we went back to, talked about the food bank and having to put their sidewalk back in, I felt very strongly that, you know, yes, sidewalks are important. They're kind of like the gateway or the welcoming to your home or your business, whatever it may be. But again, as Barry pointed out, they, we had that done because they still had, they had conjoining sidewalks, and to just take that out in the middle of that didn't make sense. Plus, they serve the public a lot. And then looking at the Riggins property, there's no sidewalks to be found, except for that little strip right there. And I can relate to that because my mother, on her side of the street, she has a sidewalk from her driveway to the alley, and that's it. Nobody else had sidewalks. It's just kind of like randomly dropped there. And I've even considered, what is the point of this sidewalk? It's like hell to shovel because it's so uneven and everything. So I don't know, that's, that's, I understand the importance of it for the food bank, and I, I still stand beside, behind that vote. For the Riggins, I, I do think that it warrants. I let them, let them take it out. It's in need of repair. It's an expensive repair. Nobody else has a sidewalk. It's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Good, thank you. Any other thoughts or discussion on part of council? Okay, we're, we're to the point now. We normally have three readings for ordinances, and there is the option to.
This is just, this is just a motion.
Oh, the motion?
Top, page three.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Yes, that's my mistake. Thank you for the correction there, Mr. Manager. Okay, I guess we would look for a motion or a sec, and a second to approve or deny the request for the sidewalk removal.
I moved to have him remove it. No problem.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And I apologize, I didn't mean to make it harder than it, than it has to be, Wayne. So anyway, if there's no further discussion, we'll just put it to a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Good. Thank you very much for coming back to the meeting wing. The next item on the agenda is acknowledgment of the receipt of the fiscal year 2025 annual financial report. And I'll turn things over to Ron Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So this is your yellow pages in the packet. This is the annual financial report. This is a report that is submitted to the state the, by December 1st of each year. This essentially is a report of the revenues, expenditures, transfers in, transfers out of our, all of our funds. As well as on that front page, you'll see about, of course, the way down, there's a listing of our general obligation debt and our revenue debt, and then our general obligation debt limit. So our GO debt, general obligation debt, as of June 30th, 2025, is $25,000. Our revenue debt, $5,987,466. Revenue debt includes both the wastewater plant debt as well, from when we constructed it, that's going down every year, but our water plant improvements that we're in the middle of a project for, and that's increasing our revenue debt. So that's the revenue debt. Column A is basically, the top portion is revenues governmental, and then column B is proprietary, that would be water and sewer. And then column C is the total. So it's revenues, the top half, expenditures and transfers out, and the bottom half, and then fund balances. And then all the breakdowns are on the following pages, which I won't go through unless anybody has any specific questions, I can try to answer them. This was published in the Hampton Chronicle, I think on November 5th. And I would answer any questions that you might have. This isn't officially approved by the council. It's basically, you acknowledge receipt of it.
Okay, any discussion or questions for Ron? Okay, seeing none, I would look for a motion and a second to acknowledge the receipt of the fiscal year 2025 annual financial report.
So moved.
And a second, please?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year 2025. Back to you, Ron.
Thank you. So this is on your purple pages. This report is also a state report that is due to be submitted by December 1st deadline. This report details each of our urban renewal areas and TIF districts, revenues and expenditures, projects, debts, and things like that. So this is by Hampton Commercial Development Urban Renewal Area, also Hampton 2020 South Urban Renewal Area, which is area that includes the Dollar Fresh property, Hampton Air Industrial Park Urban Renewal Area, and then Franklin Prairie Urban Renewal Area, which has no, no activity in it. So the front page is a summary of all the data that is in the remaining, the remaining pages. So the cash balance as of 7/1/2024, at the beginning of fiscal year 25 was 101,970. TIF revenues of $45,000, and then non-rebate expenditures of $77,500. And then the ending fund balance for June 30th, 2025, $69,470. And then the negative $69,470 is a tracking number of revenues received versus debts paid and incurred, but the actual fund balance is a positive $69,470. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this.
Any questions?
So where is this outstanding debt? What's that going to?
So the $45,000, that's our annual payment to FCDA. And then the $77,500, that is Main Street for the facade grant program and Chamber, I think. I can't remember off the top of my head. That, the Chamber one comes out of the urban, the commercial district, and the Air Industrial Park is where the FCDA payment comes out of.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would look for a motion and a second to approve the annual urban renewal report for fiscal year 2025.
I make a motion to approve the urban renewal report.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If no further discussion or questions, we'll put it to a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carried.
I thought of the other one, Barry. It's Main Street Hampton Financing. We support that financially, so that's the other portion of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if I'm correct, we have finished up our new business, and we'll move on to the approval of the claims as recommended by staff for the amount of $565,828.75. And I would just mention that the claims are higher than normal because of the street rehab for, from Heartland Asphalt was paid for, and then the police department vehicle was paid for. So is there a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, well, second, it's been moved and seconded. If there's no questions, we'll go ahead and put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. And now, now is the consideration of the approval and adoption of the resolution and ordinances. On the agenda is ordinance 408 and ordinance amending section 69.08 of the Hampton Municipal Code by adding subsections thereto, designing an additional no parking zone. And this is the first reading. And I turn this over to Ron.
Thank you. So this is an amendment as Mayor Protem stated for sixty, section 69.08, adding a new subsection thereto as follows, Third Street, no parking on Third Street Southwest on the east side from Central Avenue West to First Avenue Southwest. And this is on the street between Hardee's and Quick Start. This was in the prior ordinance 407 that the mayor vetoed, and so the consensus was that the council wished to continue moving forward. Thank you. So, this is an amendment as Mayor Protem stated for sixty, section 69.08, adding a new subsection thereto as follows, Third Street, no parking on Third Street Southwest on the east side from Central Avenue West to First Avenue Southwest. And this is on the street between Hardee's and Quick Star. This was in the prior ordinance 407 that the mayor vetoed, and so the consensus was that the council wished to continue moving forward with, with no parking on the east side of Third Street Southwest in that 10 block. So, this would be the first reading. If you wish to waive two readings, you can do that by first voting to waive them, and it would, that would take five of six votes. And then if that happens, then you can vote to approve the final reading. I'm not saying you have to, but it's an option. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
I, I think I would just move the first reading.
Okay, it's been moved, the first reading of ordinance 408. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance 408. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, go with Pat.
The reason I went with the first reading, that veto still hangs out there for another remainder of 30 days. I want to get that cleared off the table before we approve this. So, I, I would definitely be in favor of doing all three tonight if we didn't have that veto situation. So, after, after that 30 days expires and the veto, yeah, go ahead and pass the other two on it. But tonight, I just wanted to do the first reading.
Okay. Jerry, did you have a comment?
That was my question. Why, Pat? Got it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or discussion? Otherwise, we'll put it to a vote, and this will be a roll call vote. Griefy?
Aye.
And this, you know, this is on the first reading then?
Gotcha.
Griefy, aye. Lamos?
Aye.
Holmstrom?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
And then I'll vote aye also. So, a vote of six to zero. The first reading of ordinance 408 does pass. Okay, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and that is the approval of the previous minutes as drafted from the Thursday, October 23rd, 2025 regular session, and schedule the next council workshop for Thursday, November 20th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, and the next regular session for Monday, November 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the Hampton City Council Chambers. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, Jerry, and is there a second?
I'm second.
And seconded by Kristin. Okay, all those in favor of-
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Motion carried. That leads us to staff reports, and we would ask Police Chief Mark Morrison to approach the podium.
Yeah, I thought I'd just get a quick update on nuisances since we weren't here on Monday. We had eight court cases in the last two weeks, and we got four court orders out of those. The other four cases were cleaned up prior to court, so they were fined. The two court orders were taken care of by towing vehicles, and the la, the other two court orders, I have to get with Doug next week. He's on vacation next couple of days. So, soon as he gets back, we'll line up when we can get those two properties cleaned up. And then we have several court cases coming up this next week and hoping to get some more orders out of that. Other than that, it's been a busy week with investigation and criminal activity stuff. So, we've been working through all those situations. I'm sure you're aware that the Crossroads Incident, and we've been working with the county, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office and the Iowa Department of Revenue on that, and that investigation is ongoing. Other than that, that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mark, you got a new cop car?
Yes.
Is the other one going to be sold, or?
The other one is currently sitting out at the airport, and yes, I believe it'll be sold at some point.
Now, which one would that be?
The Taurus.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Ron?
Chief, have there been any or many complaints regarding burning of leaves or things?
No. And if I, I thought that tonight might be the night because when I was coming up here, I thought half the town of Hampton was on fire, but everyone got off work.
Yeah.
Everybody was burning at the same time. But no, there haven't been many so far.
I haven't noticed much smelling until tonight.
Until tonight. Tonight was the first night I, I noticed it.
Warm weather.
But it was warm weather. Everybody got off work. Everyone's trying to take care of their leaves.
Pat?
I did have a question. I said, saw somebody on Facebook saying that she had a headache, and it was in her house, and all this and that. And when I, you know, posted back that, you know, you could call the police if it's a nuisance to you-
Yep.
And they could, they could have them put it out.
Correct.
Oh, no, no, I'd never call the police. But Facebook was good enough.
Anything else for Chief? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ron, should we go to you?
Sure. Yeah, Doug is absent.
Yep.
I don't have anything to report unless anybody has any questions.
Yeah, Monday, you said they were going to burn the house.
Yeah, so, well, that's what they intended, but it got pushed to Saturday morning, this Saturday morning, I think 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Yep.
Would it be possible to change the hours of the compost pile during November to have it open at, on Wednesday mornings also?
I, I think maybe the best route for that would be go to a workshop, and if the council's consensus is to do that, it's probably too late to-
Right.
For this November, but we could talk about it. And then it's, it's usually a staffing deal, whether we have the staff, adequate staff to do it. But, yeah, I think we could talk about it.
I think it would help things out.
Okay.
Anything else for Ron? If not, we'll move on to council reports, and we'll start with Bill Holmstrom.
I really didn't have anything prepared, but I just want to thank everybody for taking the time to vote in the election. So, I was glad of that, but-
Okay, thank you. Go to Barry next.
I have no comment tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Pat?
Yeah, I want to start out by thanking those who donated to my Facebook birthday fundraiser, because we raised over $350 for the Hampton Senior Center. So, if you still wish to donate, they're not going to turn down your check. Just go to the Senior Center and give them a check. They'd sure appreciate it. While I only think I have a few faults, many people have repeatedly pointed out that I have just more than a few. I'm one of those people who takes things personally, even when it may not involve me. If someone announces that a person left their headlights on in a parking lot, well, that's, I think that's me, until I remember that, well, I've got one of those cars that turns the headlights off. If I go to the movies and see the announcement about turning off your cellphone, I think that's about my cellphone, so I scramble around and find it and turn it on silent or turn it off. Then I listened, and I had to go back and listen again and replay the words that Councilman Holmstrom read to us on Monday night, and I quote, "Fortunately, the majority of the city council takes their job seriously." He said, "Fortunately, the majority of this council takes their job seriously." So, citing from the two examples above, I guess I'm going to have to assume that I'm the one who doesn't take their job seriously. So, I guess it's time to show you and everyone else, as I have some receipts. I was elected for the first time in 2002 after a healthy and vigorous campaign against a very popular school teacher, and I was successful. The topic of the day was the city's participation with the wellness center, and there were lots of opinions. Before I got on, Barry was pretty much the only no vote on any of this, with a lot of heated discussions. After 2002, things got serious when we found out that our previous city manager thought the city finances were just smoke and mirrors, and we were in some major financial trouble. With this came the discussion of firing of two city employees because we had no other financial choice. The meeting that night was at the Hermans Park Lodge, as City Hall was having an election and was occupied. Immediately after that meeting, I walked out the back door of the lodge alone, and I was in tears. We just took away the livelihood of two city workers who'd done nothing but bust their asses for us, and we fired them at a public meeting. That was pretty serious. Next, we overhauled the building code of Hampton. That was before we adopted the state plan called the United Building Code, or UBC. Several contractors in Hampton were not happy, and one of them decided that throwing roofing nails in my driveway to flatten my tires would be the solution. To me, that seemed serious. After a vote on the truck route in Hampton, my front bay window was shot out with a BB gun. That also seemed serious. The state of Iowa adopted the smoking ban, and yet one establishment couldn't catch on and still let people smoke inside. I brought it up at a council meeting, thinking that we may have special rules for that bar or something like that. The next thing you know, there's a sign on the bar that said, "We reserve the right to refuse service to anyone, including Pat Palmer." Then they acted shocked when I voted against approving their liquor license on the next renewal date. I was looking out for people's health, and leveling the playing field among the bars in Hampton, again, that seemed serious. Then came the fluoride discussions. I was against putting that in our water supply. A lot of back and forth on, on that. And then the crank calls started at around 2:00 AM on Saturday nights. My mom, being disabled, had one of those alarm pendants, so in case she fell, she could just push a button, and the emergency team would call me so I could go over to her apartment and see if she'd fallen or what the emergency was. If I didn't answer, they called the Hampton PD. After about a month of crank calls, I'd just about had enough of that. So, just before I went to bed on a Saturday night, I set my phone to call forwarding 911. If they wanted to talk to someone so badly, let them talk to a 911 operator. I never got another crank call from them again. That seemed serious to me. My mom could have fallen, and all they wanted to do was just harass me. People also felt the need to send letters to my mom accusing me of getting divorced, wearing a fake wedding ring, and all sorts of BS. She didn't buy that, but still, it happened. You see, I didn't always vote yes. The no votes hurt people too, and they thought the only way to get back at me was to hurt the people I loved. My wife has had her share of snarky comments, had to change hairdressers, block other people out of her life online, just because of me being on the city council, and she thinks that's pretty serious too. On Friday, August 14th, 2008, my dad died at around 2:30 AM. However, instead of spending my final hours with him, we had a council meeting on Thursday, August 13th, at 6:00 PM. That seemed to drag on forever. Time I could have spent with my dad, I spent in these council chambers for our city because I'm serious about serving this community. My dad, in a frail voice, seemed to understand, but he was too, he too was a public servant and took his job as mayor pretty seriously. And in the end, I knew he was good with it. When I was out campaigning in 2009, I knocked on a lady's door, and Ward 1 asked her for her vote. She said that my dad would be spinning in his grave to think of how badly I was treating the city and would be ashamed. That, after six months beforehand, we fixed her sewer issues at no charge because I had suggested it just to end the issues and save our employees the hassle of fixing it every holiday when she would call. That year in 2009, I lost the election. I felt that as a council, we had done so many things right. How could things have gone off the rails? To me, that was serious. Out of eight years in the city council, in that eight years, I missed six meetings. Our meeting format was a bit different with committee meetings instead of workshops and council meetings. But again, I only missed six meetings in those eight years. Moving ahead 10 years to 2019, there was an opening for the S. at Large seat, and I applied. There were two of us, the former mayor and me. The interview process took over one and a half hours during one workshop and another half hour the night of the meeting. Before the vote, one councilman leaned back and said, "The thing I, the last thing I will ever do is vote for Pat Palmer to be on this city council." Well, he was outvoted three to one. After that meeting, that councilperson and I agreed to move forward and work together to make things a better place. Now, the second go-around wasn't as bad as the first, but now my wife has had to hold meals, delay supper, serve it reheated or just serve it cold. Many times, I get a text on my phone that says, "Just screw it. Pick up something at Subway." If I go to the grocery store with her, it irritates her because she wants to just have a quick stop, and everyone wants to talk to me about city stuff. Because they think it's serious enough to stop me and chat, I stop and listen, because they're concerned, and I take them seriously. These people aren't characters. They're citizens of our community. During COVID, we lost track of some people in our community who would attend meetings regularly due to social distancing. I held town halls over Zoom to communicate with our citizens about what we were doing and what the future agendas looked like. I was serious about keeping people up to date on our issues, and still post every meeting agenda on my councilman's Facebook page to shine light of our transparency because it's important to keep people informed. Rarely do I miss meetings now because you can just hop on Zoom and attend. I did have a flight delay and missed a meeting a while back. In the last, so in the last seven years, I think I've missed three meetings. I was taught that when people pick you for a job, you do the job. Then you have the conspiracy theorists who think we make $300 a meeting, and sadly, a number of people believe that. A few years ago, the city manager, mayor, and I had to have a one-hour meeting at City Hall because someone had a tantrum as I blocked them on Facebook, and they couldn't see my posts. So, I unblocked them, and I'm pacifying them now for now. On January 1st, 2026, there'll be about 20 people in the greater Hampton area, who will just have to hear what I'm up to at Hardee's or Quick Star because they won't get it from my Facebook page. The abuse of texts, emails, notes on my windshield, and unsigned letters, they just get disregarded. On my city council page, I cannot block or delete comments unless they're threatening or use the seven dirty words due to a Supreme Court ruling on elected official social media pages. So, when some whiz bang from Bradford posts about my, now clinical term, anus weighing 200 pounds, I guess that has to be left up for everyone to see. So, sometimes, yes, you do have to approach a few things with a smile and a joke, because if you don't, small-town armchair members, council members can really make you regret sitting up here as they have a problem for every solution. All I've ever tried to do for Hampton is help people. Sometimes it turns out good, sometimes it doesn't. I chose to run, to not to run for my at-large council seat, again, to give other community members a shot at city limit, uh, city leadership. But after that little puppet show we had here during the last council meeting, my phone lit up from the time I got home after the meeting until 12:30 AM Friday morning, and then all weekend long. Over 1,600 people saw that video on YouTube. People all over town and in Ward 3 were telling, I, telling me I had to do something, so I did. I had 80 postcards and a four-year-old voters list. I will say that my wife was pretty shocked when I also sent her a postcard reminding her to vote, as I'd already left on vacation when she got it, and I didn't tell her what I was doing before I left. So, I hope she voted for me. So, Councilman Holmstrom, you bet I have an agenda. I want Hampton to be the best it can be. I want people to visit and stay and move here, and I'm damn serious about that. So, if your comments on Monday are about me, that dog won't hunt, and you better be talking about somebody else because that person is not me. At this point, I'm just going to determine that's the case and move on. Now, moving on to a more positive note, my wife, Becky, our neighbor-in-law Janet, and I are competing in the big jigsaw puzzle tournament at the Hampton Public Library on Saturday. You have to put together a 300-piece puzzle, eat a breakfast pizza, and drink a couple of glasses of juice, which I hope aren't prune juice. Our team name is the PB&amp;J Puzzlers, and we're gearing up to win. On November 3rd, I made a video with the library director at this, and this, about this event and posted it. Within a day, it had over 1,000 views, so all the slots are filled up for Saturday's competition. They will have another competition in January, and I was certainly glad to help them promote their event, and you can come up and watch on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Jerry, do you have any-
I want to know what those seven words are.
Oh, well, you'll have to listen to George Carlin and find out.
We'll talk later. And talk about jigsaw puzzles. You got to do them upside down if you really want competition.
Okay.
Put them together by shape. I want to thank the voters that returned me to the council seat. I, people, some people think I'm crazy, but I truly do love being on the city council. Over the past couple of weeks, we celebrated Christmas already, the family. We always celebrate the weekend before Halloween, and we call it the nightmare before Christmas. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is because we celebrate out at Country Heritage, and what a fantastic facility that is. We rent the house, we rent the barn for the whole weekend, and it's one heck of a bargain, and it's, it's really a wonderful facility. Right now, we're busy preparing for and jumping into the holiday season. Met with Promotion Committee. We're continuing to plan the Chamber Appreciation Dinner. It's going to be a good one. Hope everybody comes. And I want to thank the police department for their wonderful work that they've done.
Thank you.
That's it.
Kristin?
I would also like to thank the voters in Ward 1 for your trust in voting me in. And also, I was also going to thank the police department for their work this week. Well, all the time, but this week too.
Okay, thank you. And for my report, FYI, the Design Committee and the Historic Preservation Committee will be meeting Friday at noon at Center 1. The Franklin County Tourism Board will be meeting next Thursday at Center 1. And I have $10,000 raffle tickets for Chamber Main Street for sale at $100 each. And I have $10,000 raffle tickets for Chamber Main Street for sale at $100 each. So, I thought maybe you were going to mention that, but buy them from me and not Jerry, so, anyway. But that's all I have. And so, that leads us to a part of the agenda for adjournment. Is there a motion and a second to adjourn this regular session of the Hampton City Council?
So moved.
And second? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the opposition? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.